Five thirty.
No, it's five.
Now, now, now he needs, oh, he needs a jam box with Pink Floyd comfortably known and some grapes.
No, this is like the things to look.
Isn't all the signatures there?
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, that's mission.
Now, see, y'all shouldn't be worried about this team.
Yeah, I guess. Go in and have a seat. Yes, probably be, be good. That's good. You all are up first. You guys are gonna be up, up front and center first, okay? You guys are ready, right? You're ready. You're ready. We'll stand for the pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Workman, would you open our meeting this evening in prayer?
Sure. Let's bow. Heavenly Father, thank you once again for another beautiful day that you've given us to enjoy. We thank you for all of the things that you do for us each and every day, those things that we see and understand and those things that we don't, dear Lord. Especially this evening, dear Lord, we remember our one fellow commissioner that's not with us who's recovering from surgery this evening. And we ask that you would be with him, comfort him as he recovers from that endeavor today. Thank you for the doctors that worked on him and the seeming success that's there and be with him as he rehabilitates the knee that has been replaced. Dear Lord, we'd ask that you would be with our meeting this evening, be with the actions that will be taken here this evening. Lead, guide, and direct in all the decisions that we make this evening. And we pray also for the leaders of other counties and our state, dear Lord, and our state legislature, which is currently meeting in Charleston. We ask that you would be with them as they make decisions that affect us all. And for our national leaders, we thank you for them. We thank you for the things that they have undertaken to do that affect not only us here in West Virginia, but across the, the, the land. And we thank you for them and we ask your guidance on the decision that they make again that affect us all. Now go with us, be with all that are here this evening and have traveled from near and far. Grant them traveling mercies as they return to their homes this evening. It's in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. All right. Call this meeting to order. Uh, first thing on the agenda we need to do is make sure everyone is reviewed and we will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the March fifth meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the March meeting.
Second, any discussion? Hearing no, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Impose, same sign. Not hearing any, we will let the minutes reflect that we approve those minutes. First up on the agenda, we're going to call our Morphill Robotics team. I know this team is ready. Getting ready to go to the national championship in Houston, Texas on April fourteenth. We're really proud of them. Right, you guys, whenever you're ready, you can proceed.
Good evening. So we are the Jack Boss from Morphill High School. We were here about a month ago talking about what we've been doing. And in that meeting, we mentioned that we were pretty sure we were moving on to Houston, Texas. We found out we are moving on to Houston, Texas. So in April, as Mr. Sheedrim said, we will be moving on and competing against about sixty countries from around the world in an international competition that usually hosts around fifty thousand people. This will be held in Houston, Texas.
Yep, and so, uh, we have a lot of travel expenses to get to that, which includes, um, plane tickets and hotel rooms for the six days that we'd be staying. Um, what, uh, hotel costs are gonna be about ten thousand dollars for the week for the whole team. And we have currently raised two, twenty-two thousand, twenty-two thousand of the estimated fifty thousand that we need to get our whole team there, including, um, our robot and, um, everybody's words, like things.
To get our robot, our team materials, our pit, and us there. And in that fifty thousand dollar cost is not just for us, it's also to take both of our middle school teams, which we mentor and sponsor. It's to take them to their national invitational event in Jersey City, New Jersey in May. So we're currently fundraising for three different trips for three teams. And we're making very good progress due to the generosity of our community and overwhelming support we've received. What else you want to say? So we are still request, we're s- we're still a little bit away from our goal. So we are requesting, what are we requesting? We're requesting five thousand dollars. We've been doing a lot of fundraising, a lot of talking to people. They're starting to blend together. I apologize.
No problem, no problem.
So we are requesting five thousand dollars from the commission to help us in this fundraising. And we would love to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I, like I say, I see the trophies here and absolutely, and, um, like I say, we saw, we saw the robot last year.
Yes.
Yeah, the robot's a lot more impressive. We brought these tonight. Um, these are just three of our maybe twelve or fifteen trophies we have. This one in the center, the acrylic one, is the one that lets us go to Texas. And that is the Inspire Three Award that we won in Edgewater, Maryland.
Here's a little clip of their, uh, robot in action. Just so you can get a little taste of.
Was this at the competition?
So this is in practice, preparing for the competition. And everything you see here is completely autonomous. It's all been pre-programmed and it's the robot working completely on its own.
So there's, we put some stats in here. There's only about five percent of teams in the world that can score this during the autonomous period of the game. Um, so our, our kids are, um, yeah, they're very talented. Um, they wrote their own code this year. Um, instead of using like a prepackaged software, they actually wrote their own code in Java, in Java.
Which basically tells us the location of the robot. So we have a sensor on the bottom called a laser odometry sensor, which works basically like your computer mouse does. And it basically tracks the robot as it moves over the field and then uses those values to tell the robot where it's at and allow us to do these complex codes very quickly and very effectively.
They're using, um, a lot of, uh, calculus derivative math in order to be able to do that. So, um, not only are they developing, you know, their, uh, engineering skills and things, but they're also developing their math and content area skills. And of course, communication, doing things like this, and, um, they have to present at all of the competitions as well. It's a very rich program and, um, I think that's evidenced by the fact that they won the Inspire Award, which takes into account all of those things, not just the robot itself. So we're very proud of our kids and what they've accomplished. And the fact that there's only a few hundred teams in the world that are moving on to national and the world tournament as well. And we have all three of our secondary level teams that are participating in those. I think that shows the quality of the program and the quality of what our students can accomplish.
Not only that, but we are one of the only two teams in West Virginia. Uh, we like to think that we're the only competitive one.
The skills that we learn on this team are not just helpful in a robotics, you know, they are helping, um, two of our seniors get scholarships to go to an engineering college in Indiana. Do you wanna talk about your scholarship?
Pretty sure we did that last time we were here.
Did you?
Yeah.
I wasn't there last time.
It is quite. Congratulations. All right, Mr. President, I would make a motion that we support these young people and the three teams that'll be, uh, traveling on to Houston, Tex- Texas from the county, uh, in the amount of five thousand dollars to help them in their endeavor.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing no, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of that five thousand dollar approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing not opposed, we will consider that motion granted and approved. Congratulations, guys. You did a great job. I'm rooting for you too. Okay, so, yeah, yeah.
Please come back and see him when he returns.
Yeah, yeah, let us know.
Now, Hardy net, now you have Hardy bot. Here it runs out.
If you all follow our Facebook, we'll share the link where you can watch them.
Okay.
And that should be April, it'll be April fourteenth through the twenty, sometime in that.
So the actual robot competition will be the sixteenth through the nineteenth.
Sixteen through the nineteenth, okay.
There's judging and other stuff that happens before that, but the actual stuff you can watch.
Okay, 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 okay. We know that you are very proud of you.
Oh, yes.
We'll get a picture.
Absolutely.
Can we get a picture with you guys? Guys, you bring your trophies up. That'll be, that'll be good.
Thanks very much.
How about that?
We're still even now, we're still like.
I'll put the short person in front.
Yeah, that's better.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Dusty luck.
Well, we will, um, contact her and we're gonna be able to.
We have Eastern Community Action here this evening. So next we'll meet, move on to Amy with On Track. Okay, yeah.
That's a tough act to follow.
You should have seen it when they were here with the robot.
Well, thank you for putting me on the agenda and, um, I do wanna introduce myself. So I'm Amy Cardo and I'm with On Track Anti-Drug Coalition. And so, um, what we do is we do prevention work, um, for substance use and misuse and, and abuse. And so we're looking to really, um, continue to do work in the community. So what I've done is I've made some folders and I'm gonna pass that around. Um, but it does have our information on what we do in the community. Why they giving that some too, if you want. Um, but we do try to do, um, um, we do things through intervention and through, um, different programming that we have available. And so in your packet, what you're gonna see is that we do try to address like, um, ways to change the community and the mindset and try to get, in a prevention world, we think a lot about like, uh, it being a river and a stream. And as you know, you've seen some of the citizens who are already downstream or unfortunately some that we've lost over the waterfall like to overdose. And so the goal is to get way, way upstream and build a bridge and have them in the prevention field where they can cross over that bridge and then they can find some, you know, a place of safety, a place of protection, um, and not have to have those risk factors. Um, so we're really involved and engaged in wanting to be a coalition. The great thing about the coalition work, of course, is that, you know, we want all voices at the table as well. So, um, we're kind of required and want to have business voices, law voices, um, teaching voices. Um, I'm the coalition coordinator, but we do do monthly meetings and we have them online and we meet and we talk about strategies of how to engage the community and being able to really, um, lift up, you know, the prevention field. Um, so some of the examples that I brought with me, we did, um, in Hardy County this year, um, deliver all, all the elementary schools got a, um, just a live drug free. Um, so that Red Ribbon Week, we always try to promote that. Um, we do have, um, several billboards in the community, um, about trying to dispose what, why, medication wisely, where people aren't flushing it and saying, hey, let's get it, you know, limit that access, um, and being able to, to advertise that way. And we've invested in the Tera Packs as well, um, and so we've distributed those in events in the community. Um, that's another way to just get rid of, you know, unused medication. Um, another thing we just invested in is the Safar Xs and those are, we have large and small pill containers that basically have a combination lock on them and we stamp it. And then everybody can get into the child safety proof, you know, nowadays, this one's just an added protection then, um, to be able. So we distribute these at events and, and in the community as well. Um, those are just a few small things, um, that are just kind of visual aids to say, this is kind of, you know, what we've already done and what we're gonna continue to do. Um, but we also then, you know, look at those changing consequences, uh, for the community, what laws and policies are out there that are gonna help us to be able to, um, really, uh, make the, the county and make parents more accountable to keep the children safe. So, um, some of the, uh, in those reduced barriers, those are some of the strategies as well as providing information. We've been able to go to the schools and, um, share some anti-vaping messages and work with the Catch My Breath coaches. Um, I'm Catch My Breath trained. We've been able to, um, also do a hidden in plain sight trailer, which you'll see, um, some of that in the packet. But that's actually that adult education piece. So we take that to, um, the schools and say, you know, parents here, come in and take a look at where drugs are just like hidden and kids can, you know, and then we also give them fact sheets about the do's and do- don't talking points. So it's like sharing those educational pieces and really raising the awareness about, you know, it's not just vaping or it's, you know, not just one. There's, there's, you know, a lot of risks out there. Um, so those educational pieces, we try to get out into the community as well. Um, so that's kind of short and simple and to the point. Um, of course, for every prevention dollar that's spent, um, there's usually twenty that's saved in the community. There's a, um, some evidence-based, um, for information in your packet from, uh, Samsha that talk about those, you know, the points about, you know, it being investment and saving. So when it comes down to it, um, one of the requests then is that the O P A crisis response money is coming in and part of that, and then Miranda actually says, please use it towards prevention. So instead of creating that wheel, we're already a wheel that's doing some work in your community. I wanted to make sure that you were aware that we're, you know, uh, making strides. I am a new coalition coordinator, but you know, we're really trying to get out there and really work, um, with the school systems and, and the events and the, um, and being able to say, hey, we're here to help and try to keep people again upstream and learning to try to stop use before it starts. So, um, that's kind of, uh, my presentation and I shall, I don't have a trophy yet to show, but hope to get there. Um, do you have any questions for me?
What are the other counties, Amy, that are in our section of the eastern regional? You, Grant, Grant is in our section.
Correct. So, um, Mineral, uh, On Track actually serves Hardy, uh, Grant, Pendleton, Hampshire, and Mineral.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, as of today's date, uh, Mineral County has awarded, um, some monies towards the prevention field. But they want, of course, you know, we're gonna honor that when the money is awarded, that it's gonna stay within that community to do what it. Now, we do work under a S A P grant, um, and that's where we were operated out of. So the Substance Use Prevention Treatment Grant is where we've been operating. But the, of course, obviously, the more funds we have, the more we can do. So instead of trying to again create that wheel of where are we gonna put money towards prevention, yay, we're here.
But Mineral did approve an amount.
Yes, um, actually, we got a first wave from them, um, uh, and that was six thousand dollars. And then they actually just sent an email this week and we're, um, actually awarded twenty thousand from them. Yeah, so that's, but again, that's them, you know, that's through the Mineral County Board. And they would request that those funds stay in. So we're gonna be able to do like advertising and billboards longer in their community and stuff like that because they've awarded some of that funding. But, yeah, so we've been recipients there through Mineral County, but that's where I wanna make sure that not only are you aware that we're here, but then that we, you know, what work we do and be able to answer any questions. The one other piece, and I forgot to mention because there were, um, the, let's see the back of it, the pride surveys. Um, it is not, I know the word pride is actually usually related to the L B G T Q community. This was a program back in the seventies. It is not an L B G T Q community. We're actually gonna implement this in Grant and Mineral, um, upcoming. But what it is, is the data survey, the name came from, they're changing it to I S A surveys, but it stands, it was named in the seventies and it means Parent Resource Institute of Drug, uh, Education Survey. So it, um, so it's an acronym. Um, but what it is gonna do is it's gonna ask, um, students, and we've actually already invested in having the surveys on hand. And the goal is to get into the schools and, and again, Mineral and Grants have, have approved doing it and we're gonna be implementing it there. But it asks the students and it's an anonymous, that's the wonderful part two. They don't have to give their name, but they do go through a survey question. Um, they answer some questions about, you know, so it does that school climate survey that they're required to do. So it meets that, um, that the, for the school board to be able to have to meet that school climate survey. They can use the survey as that and we've already sponsored it, so they don't have to pay for another one. But what it will also tell us then, by the time the survey comes out, is where that lowest hanging fruit is and where that, um, you know, was it parent acceptance of, you know, in the home? Is it because the local school was, you know, local vape shop is selling to everybody underage? Is it because, so if they answer that survey honestly, and there's a couple of places in that survey that does the, you know, catches that they're just filling in bubbles for fun. Um, but it, so it does that double check. Um, but getting that back, um, is going to be helpful for us to move forward to actually address where you, you think you're meeting the need, but you don't know until you get that boots on the ground and what the students are actually engaged with. So those surveys have been invested in, um, the school board has, uh, you know, meetings coming up. We have a, um, we have those surveys, um, at our disposal to be able to work with the school board. If they so choose to implement it as our school climate survey, and then we will really be able to target in and hone in, uh, you know, better, um, where that prevention work is gonna be best served. If that makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any further questions for Amy?
Yeah, I'd like to say we're one of those counties that is maybe not as, hasn't received quite as much money as like a Mineral County.
Right.
Uh, and prevention is one of those things that, that we've identified as we, we would definitely like to, uh, invest these dollars. And what we've done with ours is to try to invest those in, uh, alternative activities for young people to get involved with. Uh, Big Blue is one that we've chosen to support their, their work over in the Wardensville area. And, uh, so, uh, yeah, I mean, since we don't have, uh, a, a lot, any way we can partner to magnify the impact of our funding, we are very much open to, um, considering and, and some of the things that you've presented here are certainly worthy of consideration, I think.
Yeah, for sure.
I appreciate that and appreciate your time and my part is in there if you have any questions, um, to contact me about. Yeah, and if there's any other events that are going on in the town, I always try to monitor so that we can show up at those to be able to talk to and educate and provide information along the way. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. Not sure that was my pen or yours, so I'm just gonna leave it. I don't wanna like steal a pen on my.
All right, next up, we'll have a review and discussion regarding movement of financial stabilization funds to an interest-bearing account. So just leading up on that, uh, we, um, we are allowed under the law to have a financial stabilization fund. Uh, we looked into that recently. Uh, I think my, my position on it as it stands right now, um, would be to, I know Jay has looked into this Commissioner Fanzler, uh, with a, with one of our local banks and they have, um, basically made an offer of what they, what they could do as far as percentage. And that would be what I would be in favor of. I would, I would actually make that motion. I would be in favor of that.
I'd second that, you know, at this time.
Okay, motion has been properly moved and seconded, or is there any discussion?
I think the one thing that we, we did find that is that, uh, we, we are missing, uh, with some of the, uh, investments that we have. We're, we're missing out on some additional dollars that could be earned by putting these in a different Yes. category, uh, of investment where it would still be available to us, but, uh, yield a higher interest rate. And the ones that we do have, instead of letting them automatically roll over, we need and will not notify, I think, the banks that, uh, we would like to have, uh, a call or, or letter before these roll over to look for the opportunity to invest these in higher yielding, um, certificates of deposit or other, uh, investment types of things that would yield higher than the point.
Half a percentage, yeah.
Point five percent that some of our funds are currently making.
Yes.
Uh, uh, just to give the rationale.
Very good, very good. All right. Hearing no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And there's no oppose, so we will let the minutes reflect that that was approved. All right, next up, we have a review and discussion updating our funding, funding requests, like our forms documentation from non-governmental organizations, from the procedures and processes, updating our processes for this. Um, I think we have the paperwork, right? I don't know if we wanna show that or not. I don't think anyone's. It's in draft form right now, but, um, we looked over, we looked over where we are with the edits so far. This doesn't need to be, just to note on that, it doesn't need to be completed until June. Needs to be, so. What we're doing is, um, you know, people come and make requests. And we have, we have a process, but it, it definitely needs to be updated and that's what we're doing. And so we're going through that process. But as far as a motion, I don't think a motion is needed right now. Because we're just in the, in the drafting process. We just wanna keep it on the agenda so it continues to move forward. That's basically why it's on the agenda this evening.
You might wanna share maybe a few of the things that we've found in other counties that we're looking at, possibly, put together for our.
Yes, just, just for example, documentation, um, proof of nonprofit status, um, like Form nine nineties, things like that, as far as what they're providing to us, there'll be a, uh, there'll be an additional application they need to fill out for that. It also, there, there's also a provision that allows for, um, an anticipated start date, the project timeline, anticipated completion. At the end of that completion, within ninety days, they need to submit receipts, et cetera, to us. It's just tightening up the funding process and making it more transparent and also more accountable. So those are some things. We, we looked at other county, we looked at several other counties, including Pocahontas County. We got some examples from them. We're using some of their examples coming out of Pocahontas County, which is always a good thing to do. Sometimes you have a county that's doing a great job and, you know, you're not gonna reinvent the wheel, but you just use what they're doing. Um, and Aretha is doing a great job at, at following up on that. And so, yeah, that's where we are. But that, and that's also reason it's relevant is because we have some requests in now and it would apply to that. So, yeah, all right. Our county coordinator, Wendy, is sick this evening. She had bronchitis. And so on her section under the agenda, there is a request from W E L D for their music in schools program. She asked me to present this, so I'm presenting the music in our schools month two thousand twenty-five. So this is what we're looking at. Help your local stations and local schools celebrate music in our schools month. For forty years, March has been officially designated by the National Association for Music Education for the observance of music in our schools month. The time of year when music education becomes the focus of schools and communities across the nation. It is well-known that the arts are woefully underfunded. Boost your business profile and be a player in this endeavor. You and your business could be part of something. Sorry. Phone call came in. Part of something that both draws attention to the arts in our schools and provide much-needed monies for uniforms, music rights, instruments, travel expenses, and more. Um, a promotion is a hundred ninety-nine dollars that will buy ads and they list the ads. County and municipal leaders will be encouraged to sign and publish a document declaring mu- music in our schools month. I don't think we have that document.
We, we did that last, we did that last month.
And perhaps make a contribution. So maybe this month is the contribution part, contribution to this cause. But we've, we've already declared it. We've declared it music in our schools month. And there's, there's no official request for funding, I don't think. This is the general advertising thing. So we've done that, right? So advertisement, there's a, there's your advertisement for this evening, guys. All right. Moving along to Clark Humberson.
Uh, first thing on my list this evening, of course, is the exoneration settlement for accommodations orders, payroll registry. These, uh, normal items that are usually on the agenda for review and approval.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion for the exam, exam. Okay, we'll entertain a motion for the exam, exoneration settlements, et cetera. So, second motion has been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed, so those exonerations, et cetera, are accepted.
The next thing on the agenda is we have one interim barring objection that is for the estate of Michael Wayne Bar. And if you'll recall, these are the non-resident ancillary administration without appointment estates. It has ran its term in the paper and time has cured for any objections, which we have not received any.
Okay, okay. So entertaining, entertaining motion for the order barring objection for Michael Wayne Bar.
So moved.
Second motion has been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None are opposed, so that order barring objection is accepted.
Okay, looks like the next thing on the agenda for myself is the update on the Jefferson Street property structure demo. I'm sure you guys have noticed the building is gone.
Yes.
And.
It looks, looks really good.
Yes.
Even mulched it.
Mr. Judy, he seated it. He has completely seated it and covered it with the, the straw and things like that. And it really didn't take any very long. Once we got through the hurdles of getting all the permits and getting all that done, his part really didn't take very long at all. Extremely efficient.
Already received a few compliments from some of the regular passersby in that area about how much better it looks.
I'm not quite sure where some of the cats are gonna go. I guess the neighbors will have to deal with them. The last thing on the agenda for me this evening, I believe, is an in-house budget revision for the health department. I'm requesting authority to sign that. As you know, the health department is no longer in the million aging building. However, they have moved to a new facility and they no longer have a rent expense, but they have some other expenses that we just need to move money from their current rent budget, which they no longer need into the budget to cover their payment on the building and utilities and a few other things.
Yeah, yeah. Entertained most and to approve that in-house budget revision for the health department.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, so that in-house budget revision is approved. And next, and finally, on the agenda, I do think we have a request to address the commission, I believe, from Matthew Harris. And of course, you, you read our pol- the policy regarding requesting a commission. I assume it's posted right there, but.
Probably about two minutes.
It's pretty general policy. Yeah, yeah. How long did you say your?
Two minutes.
Your address is gonna be two minutes. I was just wondering, I have to turn this over, you know, I have to turn this over. So I'm just trying to make sure.
No, it shouldn't take more than two minutes. The reason I'm here is because I'm getting an overwhelming response from unfortunately, parents and kids. There's a young man that was getting bullied and advanced over to nine kids beating up this one little kid. I met the kid, he's only eleven years old. And he reported him getting beat up severely to whoever, the school resource officer, which, which promoted an investigation. When the investigation started, then they cornered the kid, assuming it's the same nine. They cornered him into a bathroom and sexually assaulted him. Now, I don't know the, the level of the assault. I just know it was an attempted sexual assault. Parents, including myself, went to the school. We made contact with the school board. We were ignored. Because it's an ongoing investigation, which we understand that, but there's been no resolution behind the kid and the kid wants to go back to school. He's in high school. He wants to return back to school. However, he knows that when he returns back to school, he's already been told twice, we're coming after you again. This, I'm assuming it's the same nine kids. Nothing's been done to the kid that has been trying to promote all this violence. Many of the teacher or the parents have decided that they're going to attack the state education board for changes. And many parents who have had kids in these schools reported the same problem for probably the last twenty or thirty years. The problem with it is the intensity of the bullying and most of it is coming from the, these kids who are involved in music, sports, football. And the fact that he defends these kids in the extracurricular activities, but shun the ones that are not involved with the sports activity. And so far, most is coming from East, I guess you call it East Hardy High School, Hardy High School. But I know it happens in Martinsburg, these larger cities, but there's been nothing started to promote the safety of these kids. Okay, and many of them are dropping out and going into homeschooling because of the bullying and I have heard nothing about drugs, which is a God sent to me. But however, parents are not sure how to progress this problem. And when they do progress it, they get ignored. Okay, so what I decided to do, which was last week, we started another Facebook group, which was West Virginia School Anti-Bullying and something else. I can't remember the webpage now. But anyway, is to bring awareness. Now, it doesn't mean this is gonna do anything in perspective for the safety of these kids, but it's to bring awareness. But the, but the parents want the state, the county and the local officials to do something. What it is, I am not quite sure yet, but I believe it's in, it's in the same category as addressing the Department of Education.
Okay. Sheriff, do you think anything should be spoken to that?
Yeah, he has an idea what he's talking about. He's putting out a lot of information. That's what they're all doing on Facebook. He's using the platform to try to run from city council, investigate, everything goes on in that school. And you know, we're not allowed to talk about any of it. We investigate like we do any other criminal matter. We refer to the prosecutors. All they do to prosecution, the school does a title nine investigation for what he's putting out there. He's just stirring up stuff. It's a bunch of false information is what it is.
Okay.
And he's orchestrated. He's putting these groups together, just keeping it going.
Basically for awareness.
What?
Oh, I said basically for awareness in defense of these kids.
Yeah, well, you can take the bank, everything the best gets goes on these schools.
I appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Sheriff, for the clarification and for being here. Really appreciate that. That is all we have on the agenda.
Wow.
Wow, it's a, it's a, it's a record. It might be a record. Could be a record. So, okay. Any other comments or questions that come before that? We do have Rhett from the, from our Congressman Riley Moore's office here, which we just saw the congressman here like two weeks ago, had a really good meeting with him and, and, and did a very good job of his operations director. And Annie, Annie, yeah, she did a very good job of getting us in there and everything. So just want to let you know that.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you're able to. And the word from us now is we're in the process of getting the information together for community funding and also for congressional spending. We'll know about that as soon as that.
Okay, and that was one thing that I did ask him about related to our fire, the Morefield Fire Department. Because they were a little in the dark about what will happen. And I just wanted to put that in front of him. I think he's checking into it because they asked me to send back the contact information for, for the fire department representative.
And I did.
Yep, absolutely. Did, I sent it to Annie. That's who I sent it to. She, okay, if you would, because you know, it's always good to keep it on his plate. You know, I'm sure he's doing it, doing work on it, but yeah, yeah, that was one big worry we had. So.
My update is that I took, I see three hundred, I see four hundred and I passed them. And if you ever take a class, you want to take it with the Air Force.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, motion has been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, this motion is adjourned.